It is four o'clock. We will call this meeting to order. Oral call please.
Counselor number Tate.
Present.
Vice Mayor Carrillo.
Present.
Mayor Flores.
Present. We will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the City Council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. There is no one in house. Is there anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We will now move on to the closed session.
Thank Your Honor. There are four items before the council on closed session this evening. The first pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6, Council Labor Negotiator's Agent Negotiator John Lawless and Patrice Hildreth, Employee Organizations, Porterville Peace Officer Association, Management and Confidential Series, Public Safety Support Unit, Porterville City Employees Association, Porterville City Firefighters Association, Fire Officer Series, and all unrepresented management employees. And two, Government Code Section 5495-6.95, Liability Claim, Claimant Rating Strong, Agency Claimed Against City of Porterville. Item three, Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Subsection D, Subsection three, Council Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation, Five Cases in Which Facts Are Not Yet Known to Potential Plaintiff. And item four, Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Subsection D, Subsection four, Council Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Initiation of Litigation, One Case. Staff's report.
Thank you very much. It is 4:01. We will now move into closed session.
The
It is 6:33. We will reconvene open session and report on reportable action taken in closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On item number A2, Government Claim, Liability Claim, Ray Dean Strawn on a motion by Councilwoman Burt Tate, seconded by Vice Mayor Corillo, in a 3-0 vote, that claim was denied.
Thank you. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Corello, and please remain standing for the invocation or a moment of silence.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to come forward? Please. Amen. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? If not, please be seated. We will now go into the presentations. Mr. Lawless, the first one.
Thank you, Honor. Our first presentation this evening will be that of the audit for the prior fiscal year, done by Mr. Jeffrey Peake, who will be joining us via Zoom.
Thank you.
I apologize. I was rejoining. Is it time for me to speak?
Yes, it is, Mr. Peake.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. So first of all, I'd like to give a big thanks to Maria and John and the staff at the city for assisting in the audit process this year and helping us to gather all of the information so that we can provide you with our reports tonight. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and go through several reports with you tonight. So you should be able to see my screen now and the reports that I'm going to be sharing with you. The first report that I'm going to go through is on the ACF, which is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And we're providing our opinion as a part of that report. So that's really what I wanted to kind of go through with you on this one tonight. And what we do is we perform the procedures to be able to allow us to provide a basis for our audit opinion and be able to provide that opinion that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. And the opinion that I have here on page 11 that states that is what is commonly known as an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statement. And that's the best possible opinion that we can provide. I will also mention that in our report for this year, we do have an emphasis of matter, but it's due to the implementation of a new standard this year. So GASB statement number 84, which has to do with fiduciary activities, was implemented during the year. And that implementation of the new standard led to some changes in the beginning fund balances. And so we just put an emphasis of matter just to alert you to that implementation of the new standard. But it really has no effect on or modification to our opinion on this report. I'm not sure if there were any questions on the ACF itself or if you'd like me to just continue on to the next report.
Counselor, did you have any questions? No questions. Please continue.
The second report that I wanted to go over with you is the Single Audit Report. And in the Single Audit Report, there's actually two different reports that we issue. The first is the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Compliance. And this just gives some background on the procedures that we perform in regards to internal controls and compliance. And we did not have any findings that we reported as a result of this. And so that's a good result in terms of the results for the city. And then in terms of the next report, we have our Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance on each major federal program. So this is the actual Single Audit Report that we issue, where we make selection of major programs based upon the city's CIFA, which is the Statement of Expenditure of Federal Awards. And we perform test work over those specific programs that are selected. And then we offer an opinion on those major programs that were selected. And so in this report on page four, we state that, in our opinion, the city complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to that could have a direct material effect on each of its major programs. So that again is a very good result for the city. Past the CIFA, there's the Schedule of Findings in Question Cost. This just is a good summary for the city on kind of the results of the audit. It talks about the unmodified opinion and then if there were any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which we say there were none or none reported. And then on the federal award side, the same sort of thing where we say if there were any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies reported, and we said none. So that's a very good result, and you can see that we said in the Findings in Question Cost section that we did not disclose any matters there as well. Any questions on the Single Audit Report?
Counsel? No questions. I just want to make note, and this information also was shared publicly each time I reported out for the auditors as we met Internal Audit Committee. And we have seen this information, but we wanted to bring it as a presentation so that everybody could see it. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. And the final document that I wanted to share with you tonight is our required communication with governance. Most of the language that's in this final report is just standard language that we're required to communicate with governance as a part of our audit procedures. But I'll just go through a couple of things within this just to highlight what the information is. This first section has the accounting policies and any changes that were implemented during the current year. And so this describes that same change for the accounting policies related to GASB 84, which is the fiduciary activity standard that was implemented during the year. The next section talks just about some about accounting estimates. The main reason for this section is just to alert everyone that there are estimates that are made within the financial statements. And while those estimates are considered to be reasonable, there could be factors that come out in the future that could have significant impact on what those estimates are in the future. And mainly those are related to claims liabilities, pension and OPEB liabilities. In that way, you're just aware that if there are significant changes in those estimates in the future, it could have a significant impact on the financial statements as a whole. We also talk about if there were any difficulties encountered in performing the audit, and there were none. In regards to uncorrected misstatements, we did have one uncorrected misstatement that was found. It had to do with the premiums for the debt service and how they were being amortized using the -- they should have been amortized using the effective interest method. But the difference between the straight-line method and the effective interest method wasn't material to the financial statements as a whole. However, under the standards, we were required to disclose this to governance just so that you're aware that it was there. But it was determined by the city that it wasn't material to record in the financial statements. So we just disclosed it in this letter. None of the misstatements that were identified during the audit were material. And so there was nothing in regards to corrected misstatements that we had to notify you about. There were no disagreements with management throughout the audit. And then we just disclosed some additional information in regards to disclosures and required supplementary information throughout this. But most of this others is just pretty standard language that we're required to communicate with governance. So that was all that I have to share for the audit reports tonight. If there are any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I think that these were very good results for the city.
Mr. Peake, thank you very much because the presentation was important for the members of the public as well because we had the information brought to us, and it is appreciated. Does Counsel have any questions? Does Counsel have any questions?
Just one comment. Sorry. Like the mayor said, we reviewed this during an audit committee. And I just wanted to again thank the staff, our whole finance department, and also the city manager for all the work and efforts that were done to obtain this really good audit report. And thank you, Mr. Peake, for presenting it again to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawless?
I need to give credit, all the credit to Maria Bemis, who chases every penny. And for your finding to be that she used straight-line interest versus effective interest, I mean, that's the gravest error. I appreciate all of her diligence on that and just doing an immaculate job in the financial reporting for the city.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into the next presentation, Mr. Lawless.
Thank you, Honor. We have before you this evening the Porterville Chamber of Commerce Annual Financial and Activity Report.
Thank you.
...
that we can provide resources to. And so with that, we are able to provide support. We have 25 new total members now. So with these 25 new members, I just think that it's really great that we're able to provide support to this business community. And next slide. We have been able to do a variety of ribbon cuttings this year. So most of them were held at the end of last year and beginning of this year, just as kind of COVID restrictions started limiting and needed possible governance to have them safely. So the barn was walked up in January of this year for a little story, which just came in ribbon cutting in March. We were able to have ribbon cutting for the Dallas Strong Credit Union, and then also for Mother Earth Gyms, which is just almost two months. And we do have an upcoming ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting coming up is for Amanda Hergensheimer Latte and a cream mart. She recently opened in Stratton. Really excited for that new drink. Our matron will be coming up on June 9th at 11:00. I also wanted to share some of the inquiries that we get in the front office. The same includes telephone calls, emails, and walk-ins that we get. We get a wider idea of questions. I've found that out first in my last five to six weeks there. So at one point, there was a lot of questions about the COVID testing location and vaccine permits. We had questions about DUI processes and maybe events that are going on. Some of the ones that I have personally fielded are many, many requests for maps for the city of Porterville. So that is actually something that we want to begin working on so that we can be a resource for the community, especially people who are visiting or who are new here. I think that that's going to be really important source for the community to go to our requests. We have a lot of representation packets, so that includes information about our city council, our different utilities that are offered here, from electric, internet, water. It also includes information about our schools, our parks, different activities to do around here. So we have given out several of those, mailed to people and emailed to them, to people who are looking to do the future. We also give out lots of member referrals personally. I've given out attorney services. A lot of people asking about antique stores that we have in town. We've got inquiries all along the way there, inquiries about small business loans and grants and how to start a business. So we are, I like to say, we're the one person of people, is what it feels like sometimes. So it was very, it's very gratifying to be able to give people their answers and to be able to help them because people are generally so appreciative of just doing that question. And so having to be able to do that for them. Next slide. And then this is just some of the community participation that the chamber has been able to do over the last year. So we are a part of the 199 committee and the Sequoia Torres Council, also a part of the P E Division, which is tied to the U S D pathway. And then personally, I'm on a subcommittee for the Academy of Hospitality, and so I've been able to work really closely with the different pathway directors to actually start offering internships, not only through the chamber, but to help them with some internships where the students can be faced with a reference to members, which has been really, has been really fun and exciting because it offers these kids a real work opportunity to experience different experiences and kind of just experience with them. So I have somebody personally who's been working with me on an internship three times, and she's been wonderful. She's been so excited to help with marketing and social media, and it's just been a really great opportunity that our school are able to provide right now. So we're also going to be working with SEAT over the summer, and also it's really, I have a meeting with friends to talk about some internships that we didn't have the month as well. Also part of Flag Day, so probably can be coming up soon. We'll share all that in a few more slides. And some of the public events that would help, we have the paper shredding event of supporting business trade, music on Main Street building in the fall and the spring. Cars Under the Stars was something that they had started pre-COVID, so that we could fill it out and have the events and be able to do things with their families in a more safe environment. There's how we met at Galaxy Theater, and then of course, every month we have the trade coffee, which is open to everybody to network and learn more about the chamber. Next slide. So these are some of the ongoing things that we're working on at Chamber. So different publications, working on, we do have our online membership directory, but we want to get something out as well because again, people often come in and ask for different recommendations. And so we want to be able to have something that they can basically walk through. And then also a visitor's guide. So we work closely with the old Paris Chamber team, and so they have been, actually very soon we'll be having that. They put together something for us that just really talks about the Porterville area, some of the different things that there are to do here, talks about our smaller business. And so we'll have that there this year. Then there's also the Sequoia Visitor Guide, so that's we worked on with the Sequoia Torres Council. And I do too, we just have a publication, a feedback, so that's going to be coming out this month. And something I'd like to add there again, with the same map that I was talking about , because I've seen that's a really poor opinion, so that's something that I kind of want to bring on there, if I can, as well. We also have a government affair coming, so that is the last Thursday of every month, and we're able to meet the different local and state representatives, a wide variety of people that show up, and it's a really great opportunity to learn about what's going on locally, looking on the state, what those are going to affect, you know, for us, for our members and our businesses. And one of the things that we're working on there is kind of updating our policy platform and also working on getting kind of more community involvement from our members because it's a really great resource that we really want to make sure our members know they can be a part of. So the other thing is we want to be hosting a variety of workshops. So this is something that is going to be determined by our chamber member meetings. We have a lot of ideas of different resources for them, from financial resources, HR-related, social media, marketing. So it's really going to be determined by what's going to serve them best right away. We're also seeking to partner with the Small Business Development Center, SEAT, the Workforce Investment Board for the different teams. And we also recently committed for the people partner, so that's a great, great resource that they provide you with training materials and all that has to do with building a website, including stuff listed on Google, a lot of marketing things that are available via the internet. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we'll start providing some of those as well. We also are still ongoing on providing those internship opportunities for the students. So again, through Chamber and through helping them partner up with the other local businesses as they share their need for us. And then something else we've been working on is a stronger social media presence. So we've really, we've really been able to have a lot of success there. So as of recently, we're up to almost 5,000 user followers. So for about 1965, we have almost 1,800 Instagram followers. And then we recently did a campaign for our newsletter to have one newsletter, because we send out a lot of important information just about what's going on in the community, what information do our businesses need to know. And that campaign was actually very successful. We had about a 50% conversion rate that we need almost 30 million users to have. So I was excited about that. But you know, we've had increasing engagement across all of our platforms, and I think that's really important because social media and all of that is just becoming very prevalent. And people look to that when they're at the event, seeing what's going on. And so we're excited about that, increased presence that we're able to have. Next slide. This is just a little bit now about some of our upcoming events in June. So we are going to be having Flag Day, and Flag Day is comprised of many different people. We have Free Outlet, we have many of the different clubs around here, the People's Lodge, American Legion. So we are all part of this committee to help be able to have that ceremony at Free Outlet on June 13th, and that's going to be up until early in the evening. And it's always a very nice way to honor blood on the United States and honor those who have had, who have served our country. So we hope that everybody will be able to join us for that. We also have our next first Friday coffee, like I said, the first Friday of every month. The next one is going to be May 3rd, and it's hosted by one of our members, Eagle Mountain Casino. So it was a great opportunity to be able to network, to get to see the, and to learn a little bit of information about what's going on with our different businesses and what's going on with Chamber. And so every month we try to have that sponsored by a different local business so that everybody has the opportunity to share more about what they're doing and providing to the community and sort of other businesses. And Business After Hours, we're going to be having on June 16th, and that's going to be at Five River Island. And that's going to be hosted by Eagle Mountain Casino. And that's again, a lovely way to come and to network with others, to meet other business owners, community members of the community, and to be able to see, you know, the incredible things that our members are doing. And so Eagle Mountain's got a lot of really big things coming up. So I think this is going to be a great opportunity to learn more about what the community is doing. Chamber ourselves, we are having our first day in the block from May 17th at River Island. And so we're really excited to be offering this event for the first time. It's going to give an opportunity to our business for sponsorships, promotion, exposure, and just to come out and have an enjoyable afternoon walking and just being able to converse with their colleagues. And then Music on Main Street is still ongoing, so our next one is going to be this upcoming Friday, the 20th. We feature local talent. We've been also trying to bring in some of the local craft vendors so that they have the opportunity to be able to be able to shop, buy our people that are coming to see the local talent. And our next group that's coming up on Friday is the Throwback Group. So very excited to be able to hear them and to give that a best for our community. So I just want to thank again the city for the continued support and just for the opportunity for the Chamber to be able to serve the community and also to work with other, other communities. So if you have any questions?
First of all, I want to say thank you very much for the report and the presentation, and from where it was a year ago into where it is now, it is appreciated to have the information to that regard. Vice Mayor, did you have any questions?
Just thank you for the good summary of the year, and also just wanted to clarify, did you say you have 353 total members? Okay, thank you.
Counselmember Tate, did you have any comment or questions?
Just, excuse me, want to thank you, and I'm sure everybody will agree that it's nice to be able to get back to getting together. Thank you.
And I'm going to go back to your comment that you are one person, and it takes a whole team to help the drive, and that would be including of your board of your directors and your ambassadors. Having been involved with chambers, that the core are the people that come on as volunteers who represent their organizations and their agencies. They are to be appreciated, and it is understood that they're the drive. And thank you for that. Okay. Mr. Lawless? Nothing? Okay. We will now move on. This is the opportunity to address the counsel on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items now scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the counsel, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. If you are here for the public hearings, items 16 and 17, please hold your comment until those items come up. You will be given the opportunity at that time to speak.
Mayor, if we can, can, for now, I'd like to take a look. The feed's not going through on Zoom, so he wants to take a look at the--
Oh, do you want to check that?
At the microphone.
Yeah, it appears that we're having some technical difficulties off of the podium, and the audio is not working. If I can take a look really quick--
Please look at it, and then we'll, I'll restate that. Thank you. And I will repeat the oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council on any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. If you are here for the public hearings, items 16 and 17, please hold your comment until then. When those items do come up, you will be given the opportunity to speak at that time. Is there anyone that would like to come forth under oral communications? Please do so now. Thank you.
Good evening. Josh Flowers, Strathmore. Wanted to talk to you a little bit today is that we have submitted for FOIA requests. And in reading the communications, I have some questions that stood out. Two things in particular that I want to address tonight. One was the foreign relations and international agendas informing the city of Porterville in regards to our policies. I'm trying to get my head around that, wondering why we would need to take any lead from a international body. The second thing I'm looking at is our council's position on smart cities, seeing where, where we're going to go with that. There has been referenced quite a bit within the, the communications. The other thing I'm here to do today is just remind you that Porterville does not need to take its lead from any international body. We are fully capable of making our own decisions. Don't get lost in the bureaucracy. As an elected board, your only responsibility is to protect the citizens' rights. Every time we take money that conflicts with our values and violates our rights, that is coercion. And the reason I'm bringing that up, it's the only way the government can control its people by not using force. We have to realize if there's strings attached to these things. We are here today to remind you that this board serves us and not a global agenda. With that, I yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Is there someone else that would like to come forward? Please do so.
Gail Knuckles, 1314 Road 216. I'm here about the animal shelter again. I'm busy out at the fair this week in getting signatures. I'd like to give you guys, all the people that signed this petition that don't want the animal shelter where you want to put it. I understand it's a done deal. So if, if that's true, why do you have, why don't you put out, like the presentation that the chamber gave, why don't you put your plans up there and show the people of Porterville what you guys are going to do, instead of letting us sit in the dark? I don't know why that property out there by the city yard is not available, because at the meeting of the animal commission, they were talking about that, how that you guys went out there and put money there. And then when the, the gentleman that was at the meeting was asked what happened to that, he goes, I don't know, they just said they can't do it. No explanation. You guys don't tell people anything. So why do you have us come up here and try to fight this, and we don't even know what you're doing? So if you're going to put that animal shelter there, you need to put it up on the screen, the plans you're going to do, who's going to do it, and why you're not putting it out there where it should be. Because animals do not need to be in that building. If you go online and look at the new shelters up there at Clovis and Fresno, and what they're made out of, cinder block, cement, and steel, that is not going to be that way. And you think people are going to drop their animals off there because it's close in town? They're not going to do that. People dump animals, they just want to get rid of them. They come out to where we live and dump them. Not, they're not going to do that in town. Maybe the adoption thing might work good for you. But you guys, I just don't understand why you want it here. I know the building was cheap. I know you got it cheap. But that doesn't mean it's right. And here's a signature. She can look at them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maraga, would you, excuse me, would you pick up that list, please, and give it just down? Thank you.
Brock Neely, address on record. It's kind of interesting that, you know, I've been coming to these meetings since 2008. And people need to learn that government works slow. All the presentations on the animal control shelter have been made four or five years ago, with all the plans and everything else. So if you keep up on these things, you'd learn some things. Now, what I presented to you is in relationship to item 16, I wanted you to have that before the item, so you could take a look at the front page of each of those items. I only printed one copy of each out because of the amount of paper. I wanted to save a tree or two. But I wanted you to be aware of the, the highlighted items down about two-thirds of the page where it says toxic. Also, it was a really bad weekend in our country. People need to learn that we don't need weapons of war in people's, civilians' hands. It's bad enough that we're going to let our police departments have them, but we don't need them in our civilians' hands. I used to drive ambulance and be an EMT. And if you know the difference between what an assault rifle does to a human body as opposed to a, just a hunting rifle, you wouldn't want anybody to have an assault rifle. The short rifling and barrel of an assault rifle with the muzzle velocity, when that shell hits somebody, it explodes their innards. A hunting rifle will go through you. You'll be able to live through it. Generally, when you get hit with an assault rifle, you're going to die. They were designed for one purpose, and that was for hunting. Humans, not animals. Hunting humans. They're a weapon of war. We need to get rid of AR-15s. We need to have gun control. And it's not subverting the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment has already been restricted because I cannot have a nuclear weapon. I cannot have a tank. I cannot have a rocket. So I don't want to hear anything about taking your Second Amendment rights away, because it's not, because they've already been limited. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forth?
Greg Meister, 116 Eugene Avenue. I wanted to talk about, well, I think you guys are aware, I'm going to be running for District Two. And so my first initiative in foregoing is I wanted to meet small business owners. And so I, I've been going and door knocking on small businesses and trying to get to know the constituents. And I truly believe our small businesses are the lifeblood of this community. And something I want to thank you guys on, and I hope you guys keep pushing forward, are these community get togethers like this, this concert that we're going to be having across the street. I think this is a great thing for our community. But what I came across, and I wanted to share, share with you guys, is I, talking to some small businesses owners next to the Porter Theater. And, and one of the main things I got from them was, where I heard a lot about was the homeless problem. You know, the homeless sleeping in front of their business stores. And something else I came across was, they told me that the homeless are living in the Porter Theater. So we've, we've, we've seen what happened with the motel on, on Main and Olive, and, and we've seen the fire with the library. And I, I just can't imagine another situation like that happening. I can't confirm. I drove around. I looked for where they could be getting in. But I, I think it's worth looking into. I also had the honor of working with Blessings of Liberty, Be the Change, Tulare River Parkway Association, Tulare County Assembly, and Porterville FYI. On Saturday, we removed 4,000 pounds of trash from the river, and we did not make a difference. I, I mean, it's great that we're coming together, but the constituents of Porterville need to come together to, to help us in this cause for cleaning up the river. And I, I took the time to go into the river and, and actually walk the river and talk to some of these homeless and, and look at these encampments. And I was blown away. It's one thing driving by, it's another thing getting down in the river and talking to these people. I, I mean, you could see the drug addicts. You could see the mentally ill. And, and really, there's some that are, I see us as enablers. And, and why I say that is because their view is, I'm living off the grid. I, I'm good. I have a generator. I have a solar panel. And they're making these encampments, and they are destroying our river. These are wetlands. This is our environment. That river bears our county's name. We have to do something. We have to find a new way of going about this. And it's something that I, I think the constituents of Porterville is, is hoping that you guys will address and, and find a new way of addressing it. Secondly, or lastly, I guess, Second Amendment ends with, shall not be infringed. I thank God for that Second Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meister. Is there some, please come forward.
Adonis Knuckles, 11854 West Canai Avenue. I would like to put the city on notice for the parking out at the sports complex. We started talking about this earlier this year. It's getting worse. Every day I leave work, which is on Road 216, I go through Scranton, and there are parking where they're not supposed to be parking. And the worst thing's going to happen, because there's a reason why you put no parking signs there, because it's dangerous. Because you have kids, and they get out of the car, and they run out to the street, even though if you're going 25 miles an hour, 20 miles an hour, someone's going to get hit. I call the police department. Every time, there's quite a few cars, and there's no park, no, no one's parked in the parking lot. They're just all parked underneath because it's shaded. I understand that. They don't want to walk a long distance. But when the casino gets going, that's going to be a major problem. Someone's going to get killed. And I don't want that to happen. And I don't like bothering the police department. Every time I go by there, I call them and let them know. And I don't know if they actually go out there and check or not. But there's got to do, something's got to be done with,
Because I don't think I can get this all out in three minutes, but I'll try. The first two items I wanted to address are on this consent calendar. Item number one and item number 14. The city is going to spend more than $10,750 on an illuminated sign for the temporary library. Why would the city council approve this temporary sign at this price? At the May 3 meeting, you approved the purchase of a copying machine for almost $9,000, an outside book drop for $5,304. You approved more than $55,837 for vast network connection for the temporary library. At another meeting, you approved over $55,000 for furniture in the temporary library. Someone told me that you are renting the temporary library for over $10,000 a month. In the past, I asked the question, if anything from the temporary library can be used in the new permanent library, and I was told, "No, it won't be used in the new library." People continue to say, "We're using the insurance money from the old library." The city is spending money that belongs to the taxpayers and the citizens of Porterville. It doesn't belong to the city. I guess it's easy to spend someone else's money, I don't know. I have no idea of the total money that the city has spent and continues to spend on the temporary library, but I am sure it must be staggering. The old library burnt down almost three years ago. Why haven't we broken down ground for the new library? Is my question. And use the insurance money for it instead of a temporary library that will probably use maybe a year or two. It's insane. All of the Porterville schools have libraries for students to use until we build a new library. Most students don't use the library. They use the internet for research and read books online. I guess I'm from the old school, since I'm 76 years old, but I still remember how hard it is when I was working to earn a dollar. The temporary library has turned into a bottomless money pit, is what I call it, and it must be stopped. The word "temporary," you're throwing money in a temporary library. Okay, item number 14, Assembly Bill 481. Remote attendance is no longer necessary and acceptable. If you are elected or appointed to any position, you need to attend your meetings in person. And I'll wait till the end for the rest of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray Dean. Is there someone else that would like to, for? Anyone else that would like to come forward? Do we have anyone on virtually?
It appears so, Your Honor.
Please allow that person in. Have them state their name and address for the record. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, good. My name's Ebony, and my address is 72 Rose, Porterville. I'm coming into this meeting in regards to my daughter. I'd like to know what the community's gonna do and what you're gonna do in regards to the wrongful arrest on Rebecca Enman, and then as well as the no arrest on the girl that was involved in this accident and was the true driver and continuously getting DUIs. And it's gonna come to a point to where it's gonna happen again, and she's gonna take another life. Now, my daughter sits in jail, her rights being severely violated. She was wrongfully arrested by the Porterville Police Department. They've already apologized, but my daughter's been sitting in there for two and a half years on zero-bell malice murder charges, not even a gross vehicular manslaughter. She's, we've already deemed her innocent, we've already proven her innocent, but she still sits and rocks on a zero-bell. Why is she being held on a zero-bell? She has no prior record, she is not a malice threat to society, and she has the right to fight her innocence. But I wanna know what the community is gonna do in regards to this, because if the police department's already apologizing over two years ago, then why is my daughter still sitting there? Why is she being so unlawfully held? And why is she so important to hold her like this? She's been in there two and a half years and hasn't even had a prelim, and I wanna know what the community's gonna do about this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else that would like to come on, please, that's on virtually?
It doesn't appear so, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We will now move into the AB 1234 reports. And what I'm going to do, because we have items on the agenda, I'm going to go from one through seven, and then I will put eight through 14 at the end of scheduled matters. Begin with the Cal Cities Policy Committee, which is mine. We met on April the 28th. Transportation's Communications and Public Works Committee is the one that I am on. We were provided with a review, an overview for all of the committees. However, legislature priorities included housing construction, homelessness, climate change, and investments in state and local infrastructure. Once again, on the committee that I serve, it is with transportation. With regard, the lobby has shared that legislature is focusing their efforts to align transportation projects with the state's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Recent legislatures go too far, he stated that, and sometimes they ignore the collaborative work with cities and are doing what they can across the state to improve safety and reduce pollution. State of Hydrogen and Senate Bill 1291. The speakers were Teresa Cook, who is the Executive Director of California Hydrogen Coalition, and Jennifer Hamilton, who is from the California Fuel Cell Partnership. The Senate bill is being tracked. Shared the fueling standards and infrastructure. Highlights were provided on zero-emission vehicles, different types of drivers. They stated that there were only 53 hydrogen fueling stations in the state. It is hoped that by 2026, there will be 200 hydrogen fueling stations. A highlight to fuel cell electric vehicles. Reference was made to the light duty and the heavy-duty transit buses that would be affordable. Hydrogen would not need to be shipped, local resources, wind, solar, and bio waste. It is intended to be domestically produced. One of the subjects that were brought up was having to do with reactivating tracks. A gentleman by the name of Francisco Castillo of Union Pacific Railroad and the Right-of-Way. Cal Cities has had a series of meetings with the governor's office to discuss the challenges and costs incurred by cities who clean up homeless encampments located on railroad private right-of-way. Mr. Castillo shared with regard to the homeless encampments on the right-of-way. It is a full-time job in a local jurisdiction process. He said there is cleanup and they come back. They are looking at a more practical approach with social services to include wraparound services. They are working with cities, again, to see how they can be assist of assistance. There was a highlight on railroad track theft. Reference was made to AB 2769 and the consequences for the theft. He stated the supply chain goods movement, it is still a crisis, every sector is experiencing that. They continue to work with ports, trucks, and they hope to make progress. Micro trenching. Gemma Kane from Southern California Contractors Association and Rochelle Swanson, Government Affairs Manager, provided us with information with regard to this subject matter. This information was in regard to cities and other local agencies that they should consider increased cost of roadway construction and maintenance when authorizing the installation of fiber and other utilities within a roadway or highway's asphalt concrete. It was at this meeting that I actually learned what micro trenching was with regard to the fiber optic line installation, which embeds the utility into the roadway. The legislative updates that were provided were on several Assembly and Senate bills, which ones Cal Cities are in support, opposition, and which ones to watch. That concludes this report. The next meeting will be virtual on June the 9th. The next one is the Local Initiatives Navigation Center, Councilmember Tate.
Link is the Local Initiative for Navigation Center, and this is a group of volunteers. We meet and plan each month. We held this meeting on the 4th of May, and we're making a lot of progress. This is a group of volunteers throughout the community, and we partner with Kings Tulare County. And we basically share resources and ideas when we get together. And this group is open to the public if anybody wants to consolidate with us. They go down to the, excuse me, they go down to the encampments, they do wellness checks. We recently found a dentist or have one that has volunteered to be able to help give clients free dental care. We also have a physician that can give physicals and can check them out medically and help correct any medical issues that they might be having. They can come to the welcome center for their meals. They're provided, if they have a sandwich or a hot meal, they're provided. We provide water, clothing, grain supplies, everything that we can to do the best that we can for homeless. But we can always use volunteers and other people can join this group, and we can combine resources, because I always think we do better when we work together. So if you need any information, that's, information is on record and available if you are interested. I have been in this group for, since I began city council, and I can see that it's growing. We have more services to provide our homeless than we've had ever. And so, but that doesn't mean there's not more to be done. It's a very challenging situation because there are some individuals that require more care than we can actually provide to them. And there's probably some other things that we could do to resolve it, but we'll get to that, I hope. Okay?
Thank you. We'll now move on to the Tulare County Association of Governments Local Motion Awards. Mr. Lawless.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had the opportunity and privilege to attend the TCAG Local Motion Awards back on May 5th. Great event hosted by TCAG. City was recognized in five categories. First was in the, what's called, transport through outstanding transit project. Also, from a collaboration standpoint, the city's collaboration with TCAG as well as Caltrans on a litter abatement program, putting those that are precariously housed to work through a litter abatement program or state highways. And then, as well as the Mighty 190 promotion efforts. And then, two individuals were recognized as well, the first being Luisa Zavala as outstanding public employee and her work in supportive transportation. And finally, Mayor Flores was recognized as outstanding public official for her support of transit, all means of transit in Tulare County. Congratulations. And our transport recognition is here.
I see it right there. Thank you very much. It was nice, because Porterville did come home with all the majority of the recognitions at the table, and it was a wonderful surprise. It was a wonderful surprise. Okay, the Eastern Tulip Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board, Mr. Knight, is that yours?
Yes. The board met on May 5th at 2:00. Most of the attendees were via Zoom. At that meeting, we had a considerable amount of time in closed session, but in open session, we approved board meeting minutes for the April 7th and the April 21st meeting. Also approved the ongoing resolution for teleconference meeting. Action wasn't taken on the Sixth Amendment, it was reviewed and continued to the next meeting. And discussed the March 28th executive order in regards to, executive order N-7-22 on the well permitting. And then, status update from Fort Creek's in regards to the basin signing for properties and assessment. There was no outreach. The executive committee meeting was canceled, stakeholder committee meeting was canceled. The results of the finance committee was relevant in the approval of the bills within the meeting. The next scheduled meeting was planned for June 2nd, however, there is an upcoming 218 scheduled for the Eastern Tulip GSA, so they will be having a special meeting Thursday, I believe Thursday, the 19th, at 2:00 via Zoom. The link can be located on the Eastern Tulip website on the meeting agenda tab. That's all I have for Porterville.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to the next one. Eagle Mountain Casino Relocation. This meeting was a smaller component of the larger relocation committee, and we met to review status of projects in conjunction with the casino and services. It's a very short report, because we will continue the discussions even more. The Tulie County, the Tulare County Water Commission. I was not at the meeting, but I did report out to TCAG at their meeting yesterday, as I am the TCAG representative. Based on the information that I received, I had another conflict with another meeting that was scheduled on the same day. Supervisor Vanderpul was at the meeting. I prepared with what was sent to me, and he said it was pretty consistent, so I will share out the report here for the Water Commission based on the information that was sent to me. With the meeting of May the 9th, they reaffirmed unanimously to continue the resolution allowing teleconferencing for the Water Commission meeting. They approved the minutes of March the 14th. They had an annual Water Commission reorganization for the vice chair and the secretary. It was the outcome. Commissioner Rhett Anderson is now the vice chair, Commissioner Jesse Snyder is the secretary. With the subcommittee appointments on the legislation, the committee is now Commissioners Eric Quinley, Jesse Snyder, and Rhett Anderson. They represent the legislative committee. The drought update that was given, there was an executive order. Ms. England, who is the Water Commission Director, she provided an overview of the governor's executive order and provided information on how the county was complying with the order. That number is N-722. She also provided examples of the forms of the GSAs that, what they were using to comply. And there was a clarification made that the order only stated nearby wells and did not specify distance, and that was a question that was brought to somebody there with regard to well spacing. Commissioner Quinley shared that he attended the ACWA Spring Conference the week prior and learned that the DWR would be evaluating compliance with the order as part of future grant funding eligibility. Ms. England continued to provide an update on available drought funding. She reported that both the Department of Water Resources and the State Water Resource Control Board continue to accept applications for drought grants. Legislation, the committee had not met since March 11th. The commission is, they're watching the following bills. Assembly Bill 1642, 2113, 2387, Senate Bills 230, 1157, and 1219. The commission is supporting Senate Bill 1426, and the commission only reviewed Assembly Bill 2201. There were staff updates with regards to the Tulare Kern DAC program, SIGMA implementation, and the administrative program. Once again, it was stated that there are commission vacancies for District 1 and 4. They are at large seats. And that concludes the report, based on the information that was given to me. And now we will go into number seven, sexual harassment prevention training. And now we will go into number seven, Sexual Harassment Prevention Training. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I can give an update. This is a required training. We attended, focused on managers and elected officials talking mostly about obligations and responsibility. It was a two-hour training, and we chose the in-person session. So overall, there's not much I can say about training except that we received it and we're good for a year? Or is it every two years?
Under AB 660, so this was your required every-two-year training of AB 1661?
Yes.
Including supervisorial employees as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
I attended it also, so I'm good for two years now, I guess.
Okay, that's good. All right, as I stated before, we have things that we need to take care of on the agenda. So the rest of the reports, which are pretty much mine, numbers eight through 14, we will put them on behind Scheduled Matters. All right, we will now go on to reports. This is a time for all committee, commission, board reports, subcommittee reports, and staff informational items. Parks and Leisure Services Commission. Is there someone that will be reporting on that? We'll now go on to Library and Literacy Commission.
I'm like a whole faithful. I show up regularly. I've got some good news this month. I was going through the highlights of April, and you understand that we have the English and Spanish Storytime. Anna Marie and Alma do these. And in April, we had 663 English Storytime participants. But listen to this. We had 1,269 Spanish. So we had a total of 1,932 kids participating in our Storytime, which includes reading books, singing songs, and playing with puppets. Now, this is on Facebook, so I think that's pretty phenomenal. That, over 1,000 for one group, that's, that's great. And the staff is still getting books ready for our temporary library. And over 29,859 materials have been processed. The virtual book club continues, and I've encouraged the public to participate. But they only have 13 members. And I would encourage people who like to read to do this because it ends up being a good discussion time and an exchange of thoughts. Grab and Go in the Park, which is every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from 11 to 3. The nice thing about it is there's no fines, no limit, no library card needed, and no due date. And we had 638 patrons and gave out 1,958 books in April. Porterville Celebrates Reading took place on the 2nd, and a total of 838 patrons visited. So what's happening is we're getting back our regular clientele. They're, they're getting ready for, for the temporary. There was a food show at the Porterville Military Academy, and it was hosted by the school district. And every staff gave every student a free book from a donation by Walmart. So a total of 300 students visited the library booth. And this was K through 5th graders, 100, and 100 of the 6th through 8th graders, and 100 of the 9th through 12. So a total of 354 patrons. There's a lot more, I could go on, but because we're a short meeting, I'm going to condense. Scheduled Matters, we talked about the library, the temporary library that is funded by the special insurance to have a temporary library. And if you peek through the window, you can see kind of a lot of the setup. We're missing a couple of desks and a bookcase, very minor things. We're waiting for our fire marshal, who isn't here, to tell us what the quantities are and when we can actually have staff go in and start setting it up. And so it looks like, pray to God and hope the creek don't rise, that the second or third week of June, we will be open. This is what we're anticipating and hoping and crossing our fingers and everything else. And we have, shortly, some of our commissioners will be going to a special conference and training. We have some new members on our board. And people are going to the different meetings, like the TUTAC, like the different groups that committees, commissions that are within the city, so that they can learn more about the way things are done. And I'm going to try not to cry. Catherine May turned in her resignation. She has moved out of the area. And she has been a godsend to our commission and to our library. And personally, I feel she's a great loss to the community of Porterville with all she's done. This year, you know, you saw when we did our thing at Veterans Park, she was training new staff to do it. So we will be hoping the city gets us someone to join us when we come back after our two-month sabbatical. But we also chose someone to refer to the council that we would like to be on the library meeting. The committee that Kelly sponsors, works with. And we had the Friends of the Library come and talk to us because they are very, very important. When I was getting ready to come here, I was debating, do I wear my Friends of the Library shirt? I'm a lifetime member. Or do I wear my Commissioner's shirt? This one won out. All the book sales they have, they have sponsored things for a lot of the kids' programs, special things, crafts, things that, they sold the books that they had, and the funds were donated to help do a lot of the programs we have at the library. That way, the city doesn't have to pay for things. If the city had to pay for everything we did, they wouldn't be too happy necessarily. And we are concerned because we're looking at June, opening the temporary library, and we want to start up like we used to. And the friends are still looking for a permanent, not, not permanent, temporary home, so we can start selling and start getting the funds to keep things going that we have had. Our library has provided more services than other libraries I've visited throughout the Central Valley. We beat Visalia by a long shot and the county library with what we do for our kids. And those are our future. So we're going to be trying to help find. The other thing is, I'm the youngest one on the Friends of the Library, and I'm no spring chicken. So if you know anybody who would love to be involved in these things, encourage them to contact the Friends or the library. Vicky, the library staff will support them. We need to expand the Friends and get them back to selling books. Thank you.
Thank you, Edith. We don't have an Arts Commission report. Animal Control Commission, is there someone that is online virtually to report? There's no one, no one in-house, okay. Youth Commission, no report. TUTAC, no report. Staff informational reports, please, Mr. Lawless.
Thank you, Honor. Two informational reports provided. The first, Water Conservation Phase 4 Status Update for April 2022 saw a 22% decrease in water use compared to April of 2013. So those are very good numbers in regard to the current conditions, which has accumulated a total since April of 2013 of 25%, certainly outpacing the 20% guided by the state. And then there were also 21 notices of violations issued in the month of April and no administrative citations. And then also provided, you had previous, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Financial and Activity Report, which that presentation and financial documents are provided for the council's information, as well as notice of termination provided by the Porterville Chamber of Commerce of its agreement with the city of Porterville effective June 30th of 2022. Staff's report, happy to answer any questions on either of them.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless. Council have any questions on behalf of Mr. Lawless with regards to these reports? Vice Mayor? No question? No question? This is all just informational at this point in time? Okay, then we will move on to the Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for the discussion will be heard at the end of Scheduled Matters. How does council wish to proceed? Are there any conflicts to be noted? I don't have any conflicts. I'd like to make a motion to approve on the consent calendar. Items 1 through 15. We have a motion.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote. We, I pressed the button. Oh, we're missing, did you press? Did you vote? Thank you. Passage unanimous, 3-0. Okay. We will now move on to public hearing, Assembly Bill 481. Mr. Lawless?
Thank you, Honor. We have two public hearings that have been scheduled for this evening. The first is considered Assembly Bill 41, Law Enforcement, Military Equipment Funding Acquisition and Use. And Chief Cassell will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless. Mayor, members of council. Assembly Bill 41 requires a law enforcement agency to obtain approval from the applicable governing body via adoption of a military equipment use policy ordinance prior to the law enforcement agency funding, acquiring, or using military equipment. The Porterville Police Department seeks city council adoption of the Attached Military Equipment Use Policy, 704, Attachment 1, in order to allow Porterville Police Department to continue to use vital equipment specified therein. The items deemed to be military equipment by AB 481 are used as a component of overall best practices for law enforcement agencies throughout the country. These tools are used by law enforcement agencies to enhance citizen safety and officer safety. Loss of these items would jeopardize the welfare of the citizens of Porterville and the police officers. The term "military equipment" as used in AB 481, in fact, does not necessarily indicate equipment that was used by the US military. On a side note, the Porterville Police Department does not have or issued any equipment from the US government or DoD, the Department of Defense. Attached to the staff report is an inventory list of the Porterville Police Department's military equipment defined by 481. The definition of military equipment includes items such as unmanned, remotely piloted aerial vehicles, ground vehicles, armored personnel carriers, and other vehicles, breaching apparatuses, certain types of firearms, ammunition, explosive breaching tools, and certain projectiles launching platforms that the Porterville Police Department currently uses. Porterville Police Department is committed to using the most updated safety tools and equipment to safeguard this city. Many of these items are deemed to be military equipment by AB 481, are in fact employed by the Porterville Police Department and agencies across this country in order to specifically reduce risk to the community and members and officers. These items provide police officers with the ability to safely resolve volatile situations which otherwise might rise to the level of lethal force. To that end, the items at issue in this report and accompanying military equipment use policy also provide police officers with vital tools that facilitate compliance with its stringent use of force policy. The proposed ordinance seeks to, seeks approval, the Porterville Police Department Policy 704, which constitutes Porterville Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy. The policy includes the current use and cost of each item. These particular items and their stated use have been in place prior to implementation, sorry, of AB 481. Future acquisitions of any item deemed to be military equipment, if not previously authorized by ordinance or by policy which is required by this council. The purpose of the ordinance and Policy 704 safeguards the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. Policy 704 ensures that there are safeguards, including transparency, oversight, accountability measures which are in place. For example, Policy 704 requires that the Porterville Police Department's Investigation Services Lieutenant will ensure that the Porterville Police Department complies with Policy 704 and will conduct an annual audit of the military equipment. Members of the public are provided, provided direction per the policy on how to register complaints for any violations. All items which result in the use of force will be investigated and are already required by existing Porterville Police Department use of force policy. There are no reasonable alternatives to these items listed in this report, and the PD has not discovered alternative items that can achieve the same objectives for civilian and officer safety. There is significant interest in ensuring that law enforcement continues to access to equipment that is provided, as many options as possible to safeguard lives and protect civil liberties. The use of these tools identified in the staff report above are vital to the Porterville Police Department's mission and will continue to regulate through internal processes and oversight. The recommendation is that the city council consider approval of the draft ordinance establishing a military equipment use policy. And I'm available for any questions.
I'll just note too, but this is the time and place for the public hearing. And that actually, the action tonight is to, to go ahead and consider, after you've heard the public, what anyone wants to say for the public hearing, to consider and give second reading and make final adoption of the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is 8:06, 8:06. I'm going to open up the public hearing.
Brock Neely, address on record. The documents I gave you earlier are the safety data sheets for the components under the chemical page in the inventory. All those items, with the exception of two, contain CS gas. You'll notice that the safety data sheet for CS gas states that if inhaled or ingested, it is fatal. Once again, I say, if it's inhaled or ingested, it is fatal. There are three other components under the classification by the CDC as tear gas that are not fatal. I would recommend investigating those three components and not the CS gas. The other thing is, under the Policy 704, under the Munitions section, I'd like to see that wording changed a little bit to where it says munitions containing tear gas or CS gas and not limited to in there. So that you can actually use others without having to actually state what it is. Then also on all the inventory pages, if this is going to be turned into the Department of Justice or anybody, the word quantity is spelled wrong on every page. So that needs to be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forth for the public hearing?
Josh Flowers, Strathmore. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your service and everything that your officers do. I completely believe that they should be equipped fully to quell any situation that they come up against. We need to look at, the only thing I want to address regarding this is the funding of the acquisition. I want to make sure that we don't give up authority of having jurisdiction with that. Just make sure that you don't accidentally let other people into your jurisdiction. Just make sure that you, you don't accidentally let other people into your jurisdiction that shouldn't be in here, so that's the only thing I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Is there someone else that would like to come forth? Do we have anyone virtually that would like to participate in this public hearing?
No, your honor.
Thank you very much. It is eight oh nine. We will close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Counsel, do you have questions? Do you, how do you wish to proceed? Vice Mayor?
I guess I just have a couple of clarifications to the chief. The ordinance is going to incorporate the internal policies that you listed, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then this is just outlining, this isn't restricting the department from utilizing equipment, it's just outlining the process and usage and things like that?
Yes, correct. And then it's also revisited annually by this body.
I think that's all I have right now.
I'm going to thank you for that response, Chief Costello, because it, it was something that, a clarification that I had. Your policy manual must be very thick, because I've seen it, okay? And I know, I've seen it. I started looking for something and thank goodness that, yeah, but it is appreciated. Counsel member Tate, did you have any comment or question?
No, I did not.
Okay, counsel, how do you wish to proceed?
Well, I'd like to consider some of the comments made about checking on the spelling and things like that.
What you can do is just make a motion subject, we can make, we are actually allowed to make typographical changes anyways, but you can go ahead and just note, subject to typographical changes when you make your motion, and that'll take care of that.
Counsel member, did you have any other comments before? I, okay. So I'm, I would like to make a motion, correct? Is that what I'm doing to?
Yeah, if you'd like, I can, I can help you here, since we didn't, it wasn't included in the staff report. The, the motion the staff is looking for is a motion to go ahead and adopt and give second reading to the uncodified ordinance of the city council of the city of Porterville regarding police acquisition and use of military equipment, subject to minor typographical changes, and waive reading except for by title only.
Thank you.
That is the motion, okay?
Yes, that's the motion.
All right.
Thank you for the assistance.
With that motion made by the vice mayor with the assistance of legal counsel, I'll go ahead and second. Offer the vote, please. Passed unanimously, three zero. Thank you so much.
Free by title only, your honor.
Please.
An uncodified ordinance to the city council of the city of Porterville regarding police acquisition and use of military equipment.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to number 17.
Thank your honor, second public hearing this evening is to consider the transition to phase three of the city's water conservation plan, and with that, Mr. Knight will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, mayor, members of council. This is a time and place to conduct a public hearing regarding the transition from phase four to phase three of the city's water conservation plan. The summer months are approaching naturally increasing water consumption needs for the community. Conservation reduction guidelines presented in past executive orders and subsequent regulations adopted by the state Water Resource Control Board encourage conservation as a way of life. Taking into consideration the state water board's self-certification criteria for the city of Porterville's water supply, the city council approved maintaining a self-imposed conservation standard of 26% less than the production of 2013. The community continues to do a good job conserving water with great fortitude. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to discuss transitioning from phase four, a one-day-a-week watering schedule, to phase three, a two-day-a-week watering schedule. Phase three is a mandatory odd-even-two-day-a-week watering schedule. Odd addresses would be allowed to water on Tuesday and Saturday, and even addresses on Wednesday and Sunday, while also maintaining time limitations between the hours of 5:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m., and 5:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m. Outdoor irrigation will not be allowed Monday, Thursday, or Friday. Through the implementation of mandatory conservation measures, the city of Porterville has been able to maintain a robust cumulative conservation total reduction of 25%, and that would include June of 15 through April of 22. In order to maintain the system resiliency under increased summer temperatures, conservation, reductions, sorry, would continue to be monitored to stay under the demands of 2013. It's staff's recommendation that council conduct a public hearing to discuss moving to phase three of the city's water conservation plan. Phase three would add an additional day of watering to the schedule for outdoor landscape. The recommendation is to commence with phase three effective June 1st, 2022, and continue this watering schedule through the increased summer temperatures until October 1st, 2022. On October 1st, 2022, the city would then transition back to phase four of the city's water conservation plan, a mandatory one-day-a-week watering schedule. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Knight, for your report. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is eight fifteen. I will open up the public hearing.
Brock Neely, address on record. I'd like to commend Mr. Knight and his department and everybody that has made this happen so that we actually are conserving water. But the problem I see is I've got friends that live in Carmichael, Sacramento, Palm Springs, various other cities, and I've asked them, do you have water limitations? No, we can water seven days a week. There's something wrong here, especially when a lot of our water's going to LA County, and there's a lot of them down there that have no water restrictions. We need to talk to the state, and they need to start cranking down on these people.
Thank you. Is there someone else that would like to come forth, speak on this item? Public hearing? Is there someone on virtually that would like to come forward?
No, your honor.
Okay, it is eight sixteen. If no one else, we will close the public hearing, bring it to council. Did you have question? Direction, how does counsel wish to proceed?
Just want to thank Mike Knight and the staff for all the conservation efforts for our city and beyond, and all the work that's being done, even just with the conservation plan itself. Just want to acknowledge that we're in a good space in a really bad time, so thank you for that. And I'll wait to see if counsel member Tate has anything.
Counsel member?
No, I appreciate that our city's doing the best as it, as it can to pull together and conserve water, and, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation. We were able to, in the past, not worry about these issues, but it is a big concern, and thank you.
I'm very grateful to your participation in all the water meetings, because they are very important, and thank you for that, and to see the foresight and the vision where other cities are struggling with their water, and we are saving, and thank you for the information and bringing it forward. It's difficult, it's hard. My plants are all dead, but I'm okay with that. I'm fine with that, and it's okay. How does counsel wish to proceed?
Mayor Flowers, may I just add a couple of comments?
Oh, please.
I, I referenced this in my emergency drought, the emergency report on drought. We were contacted by county OES a week ago, and this was prior to the determination by Bureau of Reclamation to allow Lindsay an emergency allocation. Had that not happened, the city of Lindsay was facing a prospect of not having drinking water. So there was a lot of conversations going on in the event that Bureau of Reclamation wasn't going to allow that, which we were notified that, and, and still may be, and this is why I want to put it on the record, that the county may, and the state may exercise its right to 3 million gallons of water a month without charge on the city-county well that was part of these Porterville water supply project. I did bring to their attention, and certainly we've been a good partner in, in resolving, and continue to be, as I shared with you, we have a number of consolidations that are still in process. Hope Elementary School is in the process of trying to consolidate with the city, because they don't have drinking water. So there's a number of projects and, and small communities around Porterville today that are still seeking consolidation. I did bring that to the attention of the county and said, you know, want to be a good partner, and we always have been, and understand the, the parameters of the well agreement that we have, recognize that the state still hasn't met its end of the bargain with the third well being developed. The second well just came on this month. All, the, the city well was done, all nine hun, you know, 800 and so residences were connected back in 2018, and finally in 2022, well number two came on, we call it the church well, and the Aiken well is just even now still only in, I would say, in financial paperwork. So it is certainly a bob and weave that we, that we take, and it also goes, and this is what I want to say, this, this city was doing recharge before recharge was cool. It has invested a half a million dollars a year in recharge efforts, in either acquiring water rights to be able to do recharge, or buying water to do recharge. And I do want to credit Mr. Knight for this. I will tell you, Standard and Poor's, who did your rating for your water bond, said the city of Porterville is a beacon in a sea of darkness in the Central Valley. And it's been because of the factors, the tertiary treatment facility that is being done in collaboration with the Tula River Tribe, and the Eagle Mountain Casino is another example of that, that's a $15 million water improvement that actually has a net benefit to the community. And so when we covered this in the Capitol, Capitol projects, talking about the, and I know there's been almost priority number one for the city council, has been the, the transition of the city to recycled water, so the irrigation of parks and, and schoolgrounds, and being able to remove, reduce the groundwater extraction, and, and to improve, I would say, the overall appearance of parks and school sites as well. So it's a combined effort of those things. But I just want to say that this is all part of a broader strategy and plan that's been in development for more than a decade. And just to appreciate all that Mr. Knight does, he is well-regarded in the water field by experts, so, and we're fortunate to have him in our employment.
Your work doesn't go unnoticed, Mr. Knight, especially your participation in a lot of those meetings, when we have to do a tug and pull with some of the information that is delegated. Thank you. All right, counsel, how do you wish to proceed? We conduct the public hearing, how do you wish to go?
I'll make a motion to transition from phase four to phase three of the city water conservation plan, effective June 1st, 2022, and transition from phase three to phase four, effective October 1st, 2022.
We have a motion. I'll second. Call for vote. Passed as three zero. Thank you. We will now move on to number 18 of scheduled matters.
Thank your honor, we have two scheduled matters this evening. The first is a consideration of calling November 8, 2022, general election, and requesting consolidation of election, election and setting specified services, and Ms. Huldworth will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, honorable mayor, members of council. As the city council is aware, the city's next general election is set to take place on November 8th, 2022. Two districts have representatives with terms expiring in 2022, those being Councilmember Luanne Tate in District One and Councilmember Milt Stowe in District Two. It is now time for the council to make certain determinations for the council, I'm sorry, for the election protocols, including A, whether the city wishes to consolidate its election with the county elections, and B, whether candidate statements will be permitted, and if so, how much, if any, the candidate should be responsible for paying. With regard to consolidation, the city has consolidated its elections with the county for the past 19 years. Prior to 2003, the city had the fortitude to undertake standalone elections with the assistance and guidance from the election consulting firm Martin Chapman. However, that firm has ceased operations, and that ended in 2018. In consolidating with the county, the registrar of voters would provide a robust schedule of services, including the distribution and filing of nomination papers and candidate statements for candidates for city offices, make all required publications, prepare, print, and mail to the qualified electors of the city, sample ballots and voter pamphlets, provide vote-by-mail ballots and said municipal election for use of the, by the qualified voters who may be entitled to such vote-by-mail ballots, and a plethora of other election-related duties. Staff has confirmed the county's receipt of the newly drawn district maps, as approved by the council through the city's redistricting process. With regard to the candidate statements, the council must determine whether the candidate statements are to be allowed, and if they, you do make that determination, then who would be the responsible party for paying the pro rata cost of printing and distributing those statements? The said cost is based on the number of registered voters within each district. Staff estimates that the cost would be approximately $1,300, but however, that is just an estimate and a deposit, if you will. At the end of the election, the county registrar of voters will reconcile, and then if it's an overpayment, the, the money would be refunded. Historically, past councils have differed on approaches to this item. In some past elections, the county bore the cost, the city bore the cost of the candidate statements, and in others, most recently in the 2020 election, the candidates bore the cost. The council could also consider a hybrid model in which the city and candidate each pay a portion. Staff has budgeted $32,000 for this election, and for council's information, the number of registered voters within Porterville as of the date of this printing was 24,894. With that, staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt the draft resolution calling the election for November 8th to 2022, requesting and consenting to the consolidation of the election and setting specifications of the election order, to adopt the draft resolution requesting that the board of supervisors permit the registrar of voters to render specified services to the city for the November 8th election, three, allow candidate statements of 200 words or less with no additional mailings, and determine whether the candidate or the city or both shall be the responsible party for the estimated cost per candidate, four, authorize the county election department at 5951 South Mooney Boulevard, Visalia, California to be designated as the central counting place for the November 8th general municipal election, and five, authorize payment to the county registrar of voters upon the completion of the requested services. That's staff report, I am available for questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Counsel. Do you have questions? I'm going to unfold the dialogue and just simply state that in 2020, but I've served on other campaign committees in different capacities, and even when I ran for the hospital seat, all the paperwork was filed at the county. It was pretty much, when 2020, in the reelection process, that was the first time city council had done it, and it facilitated the process by having all the information there, because they could justify immediately the voters when you take back your nomination petitions, but they had all the information that you picked up the package, or it was offered to you virtually and online, and you walked in with your paperwork, and they were able to check it off immediately. So that process is a good process to have it consolidated. And the question that I have, because I believe, I believe candidate statements should be paid by the candidate, it's very simple to that regard, because in their campaign, while they are campaigning, that is something that they can be reimbursed for through the campaign, but for them to pay it upfront, I know that I paid the $1,000 for mine in the reelection, and the at-large, it was just a little more, but that was a different venue. The FEPC paperwork would be still filed here with the city. Is that correct? Like the?
That is correct. We're the filing official for the FEPC.
Yes, but the actual filing of the candidate and their candidate statements, and their disclosure to all of that, that would all be done at the county. Counsel members, do you have any question?
I just have a comment. I also did my candidacy in 2020 and found, it was my first time, so.
so it's a big process, but I found that going through the county, having everything go through there was the one helpful thing. And then looking up information, it was the same place to look up any information, even updates as the voting started, as the, you know, everything was being counted and getting updates on anything else that may have been missing or that you had to go back and, and ensure that you submitted correctly. So I, I like that there was guidelines and you could, you know, clearly read those and things. And, and I also agree, I, I paid the, paid the fees myself and raised money to, to help, you know, do that. But, I mean, I, I made the commitment to do that, so I agree with that. I don't think I have any questions, though.
Do you have any comments?
No, if, if that's what we've done in the past, I would follow, like to follow that same statute.
Another benefit to having your paperwork filed with the county is that if you want to procure your additional forms with who your registrar of voters are and you want to know in your district, you can get that information there. I know they have the fee for cost as to whatever it is you can use and whatever it is you need, and that is available through them as well. Okay. Counsel? I'm going to go ahead on this one. I'm going to go ahead and direct that we adopt the draft resolution calling for the election for November the eighth and consenting to the consolidation of the election and adopt the draft resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors permit the registrar of voters to render specified services to the city for the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two election and allow the candidate's statements and that the candidate be responsible for the cost and to authorize the county election department on Mooney Boulevard to be designated as the central counting place for the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two general municipal election and authorize payment to the Tulare County registrar of voters upon the completion of the requested services. A second.
We have a motion. We have a second. One quick question. The motion and the second is on the table. If a candidate that decides to run for office or has and they cannot afford their candidate statement, there is something that they can obtain to?
That's correct. There's a provision in the elections code that talks about indigent individuals, so it would be based on income, and there's a formula for that. So yes, there is a process for those that could not afford it.
And it would be done there?
Right.
Thank you. That, that's, I just wanted to ask the question so that.
And I would like to make note, just for informational purposes, that the nomination period begins July eighteenth and goes through August twelfth, and that the county does accept appointments for going in to fill, to pull your papers, and they will start accepting appointments that week prior, the Monday, which I believe is July eleventh.
Thank you very much. I just had to ask the question. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Please call for the vote. Passes unanimously, three zero. Thank you very much. We will now go on into number nineteen.
Thank you, Honored. The final scheduled matter this evening is to consider acceptance of Senate Bill Two pre-approved architectural plans. Mr. Biden will provide that staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lawless. Honorable Mayor and City Council, in two thousand and seventeen, the legislature enacted the Building Homes and Jobs Act, known as S B two, which created the Building Homes and Jobs Tools Trust Fund in an effort to assist in creating additional housing. To this regard, S B two directed the state of California to distribute money to local jurisdictions in order to help accelerate housing production and promote housing affordability for lower and moderate income households. At its meeting on October fifteenth of two thousand and nineteen, the city council adopted a resolution in support of the city's S B two grant application for housing-related planning efforts. The grant application requested funds for architectural services to design a master set of multifamily and accessory dwelling unit plans that would fit on standard-sized lots in the city. These proposed plans can, would consist of developers and property owners by simplifying the, the process of acquiring building permits for new residential units. The city was awarded an S B two planning grant in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. At its meeting on September first, two thousand and twenty, the council authorized a request for proposals for the architectural services. In February of two thousand and twenty-one, the council selected R R M Group, Design Group, for as its consultant to prepare these draft plans. The R R M Group has drafted eleven plans for the program. The prepared plans include three options of accessory dwelling units, also known as A D U's, and eight multifamily residential units. The program allows for the plans to be utilized free of charge within the city of Porterville. The multifamily residential plans are undergoing building permit review and master sets are expected to be approved by the end of the month, in line with S B two to help accelerate housing production, promote housing affordability for lower and moderate income households. Residents will be able to utilize the accessory dwelling unit plans on any residential zone lot in the city to create accessory units as permitted under state law. Additionally, residents will be able to construct one of the pre-approved A D U's in place of a primary residence to encourage infill development. At such time, a larger residence could be constructed. Residents could then be able to transition the previous unit into an accessory use. To encourage infill A D U plans may also utilize to create cottage or court bungalow style in multifamily developments, subject to full compliance with the multifamily residential standards, and to help add a variety of lower-cost housings to, to the market in Porterville. Given recent changes in state law under S B nine, residents would also be able to utilize duplex plans in R S one and R S two zones, subject to certain conditions. All pre-approved multifamily plans are able to be developed in any R M zone or D R M zone, subject to compliance of development ordinance. In an effort to optimize the accessory dwelling unit program, staff researched possible financing options that could be used in conjunction with the Porterville residents specifically for A D U's. Staff contacted Self Help Enterprises to inquire about their A D U financing program that they use in Clovis to determine its capability with the city's A D U program for their, for their service area. It was confirmed that Porterville residents could use their program when we are in their service area. In addition to this financing, the state of California, through the California Financing Agency, offers homeowners the ability to apply for up to forty thousand dollars to reimburse pre-development and non-recurring closing costs associated with the development of an accessory dwelling unit. Today, I'm happy to inform you that we have Randy Rusum of R M Group to provide a presentation on designs for the A D U program, a multifamily program that him and his staff had developed. After receiving the presentation, staff's recommendations, the city council accepted construction documents from the R M Design Group and authorized the release of plans to the public after approval of the master set.
Passes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to share with you the results of this wonderful program. I have a graphic presentation to share here, so I will attempt to share my screen to see how, how this all goes. I can find the appropriate screen here. There, wait me one moment, please. My apologies. Let's see. See if I can get there this way. All right, hopefully you, you're able to see the presentation.
I see it.
All right. Excellent. Well, thank you. Let me carry on, on through this. As was indicated, we have two components to this project. One are the A D U's and the other, which was unique to your city. We, we do this all over the state, and this happened to be very unique in that you used your grant funding to pursue the opportunity for pre-approved multifamily projects. So that, that will be fun to go through, the uniqueness of that. Couple of things at the outset, I'm here to sort of share the design. I don't really, I'm not here to, to discuss state law as it applies to this, so we'll leave that for staff. We did, through our process, identify four different prevalent vernaculars in your community: agrarian, Spanish colonial revival, California ranch, and a craftsman or bungalow style. So you'll see those styles repeated throughout this. I'll take you to our first A D U. We have a small, four hundred and eighty square foot studio that has the ability to be reconfigured as a one-bedroom, also with an optional wall. Throughout this process, we try to integrate as many end-user options as possible. Some of those things involve optional windows that could become doorways or optional locations for entries. In some cases, we provide variations on bathrooms so that we have a standard bath, an adaptable or an accessible bath option, and that will vary per plan type. You can imagine that a, a small studio doesn't allow for as much variability in accessible bathrooms and things of that nature. Each one of these units are presented in three or four different styles, whereas I noted the agrarian, the Spanish colonial, California ranch, and the bungalow style. Our second A D U, which is six hundred square foot, one bedroom, this one, we chose to make a fully adaptable bath, actually could meet accessible requirements with the exception of the washer and dryer. As a stacked washer and dryer, would need to be a side-by-side, to be a fully accessible unit, so it still qualifies as an adaptable unit. We do have options, as you can see on there, for optional entry locations. And again, this project is presented as four different styles. I should probably clarify on these A D U's, that we try to create different configurations, some rectangular and linear, some square, try to create as many options for entries from a side or a long face, so they can be applied to as many lots as possible throughout your community. Our third and final one was a little bit bigger, still not a very large residence, but in the range of what we felt was appropriate for an A D U, someone building a larger A D U would likely seek out their own custom design. So this, again, is a two-bedroom, eight hundred square foot, all very standard-sized bedrooms throughout these projects, somewhere in the ten to eleven foot in each direction. We have a variety of options. I'm showing you a primary design here. There are options on how closets layout and a, and a few things like that, but allow for customization by the end user. And again, we have the, the four styles, how they would be applied to this particular, particular design. And that, that represents the A D U's and that they have gone through plan check, they are, as my understanding, ready to be implemented within your program. The second part of this process was the multifamily, which is much, much a larger process. It required eight different building types, configurations from duplexes all the way up to fourplexes. We developed a, a process where we are trying to utilize similar unit plans and reconfigure them into different, into different buildings, almost like, you know, building blocks, in effect. So I'll take you through those. Take you through the units first. Here we go, title page. So we have a small, again, studio unit here, four hundred and twenty square feet, very efficient and small. Then we vary up to a one-bedroom, still single level, one-bedroom, six hundred square foot unit. Then we go into some of these two-story units. This one happens to be a two-bedroom, one and a half, yeah, one and a half bath, a little more efficient, but for a two-bedroom, eleven hundred square feet. Then we come into another variation of the two-bedroom, a little bit larger, seven fifty-five. In some cases, these are configurations, the result of having to combine them into the building block style to allow variation in, in the building configurations. We have a unit E here, where we go up to a three-bedroom, two-story unit. This one had a lot of appeal for staff in that we had single-level living on the bottom floor there, so you could have someone with special needs or elderly family living on the bottom floor with a fully adaptable bath and still have the upper bedrooms available for, for the rest of the family. We, we all consider this probably one that will be very sought after. And then here's how we configure these into buildings. As I said, we had a number of configurations. The first one was the duplex, where we're using a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom plan to create a very simple, straightforward, street-facing duplex. We do, as we went through these, always considered the minimum requirements for private and common open space. What you see before you is what we consider a generic site plan. When these go through your act, actual final building permit on these, the end user will have to generate a, a site plan which is in responsive to, to the site specifics as far as parking, drainage, any civil engineering type issues. So this is just a generic test fit on what we found to be the very common width parcel throughout the town, a hundred and fifty feet deep and fifty feet wide. So you'll find all of these try to work with that configuration. Each one of these plans had only one style applied to them. They do not have all the variation. This one utilized the Spanish colonial revival, so that would be your, your duplex plan. And then we have a, another duplex configuration with a little bit larger units with a, both two-story units in this case, which, just as simple, you've probably seen very similar things without, throughout your community on multifamily, multifamily projects like this. Building configuration three, we, we looked at trying to do a duplex in a long skinny, which could, on a, on a larger lot, maybe you'd have two of these on there. In this case, it wouldn't be allocated. This would be an opportunity for a front access off the street and the parking in the rear. So we're trying to come up with designs that fit a variety of the lot configurations and, and constraints that we might be finding throughout your city. Again, these are both two-story units, presented as somewhat of a California ranch style here. Then our fourth plan, again, is another duplex configuration here, larger, three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath units, both of those presented in a, sort of a large house craftsman style. Our fifth plan, now we start moving into larger projects. These are triplex with a common courtyard in the middle, loading off the back off the alley for parking, and then street access to all the units along the walkway on the top there. Again, these are all three-story units. They all have sort of their own individual entry and open space as well as common space. And again, that one, we configured as a craftsman. We felt that was one of our more successful ones as we went through the process. Plan six is another triplex, but a smaller one, so not, more accommodating to a smaller lot or a lower-level neighborhood, a little more economical to build. Couple of one-bedroom, six hundred square foot units and the studio space. And you can see how that plays itself out, a little, little more appropriate, California ranch style for the single story. In plan seven, we again go to a triplex configuration with stepping up one of the units to a little bit larger, two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath unit, very similar to the previous one as far as the overall number of units and utilization of the site. Played out, has an agrarian style. You can see the, the one-story units wrapping around the two-story building there. And our final plan is a, is a triplex. Triplex, three triplex unit. Sorry, I think that's incorrect, we stated fourplex unit with two one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units central to the, the project. Again, sort of play. central to the project, again, sort of plays off that previous courtyard concept where the, you have the nice opening in the middle of the site there for access. This one is a little bit more challenging as we add the requirement for that parking to accommodate all these units, that if the decision was made that tandem parking would be an available option on an alley-loaded type product, so that's what you're seeing right here. And this, we designed this as a Spanish Colonial style. That concludes what I have to share with you this evening. I'd be happy to leave this up if you'd like to ask questions about specific projects or specific designs, otherwise I'll close out the presentation.
Thank you very much. I want to comment that the renderings on each of the models are nice, they're nice, and it's appreciated.
Absolutely, it's been a pleasure working with the staff to deliver this project.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the construction documents from RRM Design Group and authorize the release of those plans to the public after approval of the master plan set.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second call for the vote, please. Pass is three-zero, thank you. And now we'll go back to the AB 1234 reports to finish. The TCAG Sustainable Corridor Committee was canceled because of the San Joaquin Valley Policy Conference, so there was not a meeting on May the 12th. Councilmember Tate, the Casino Relocation Committee?
I attended it virtually, and just basically sat in and observed, didn't really interact that much, but it's, they're at a point now with the construction that in June they're going to be using a generator that they purchased to actually turn the lights on and to get it going. And it has to be kept at a consistent temperature, they're at that point of the construction. So it's interesting watching this go from the ground up to where it is, and it's an exciting project, and I enjoy participating.
Thank you. Heard you had a long wait. Thank you. The next one is the San Joaquin Valley Policy Conference, Mr. Reidenhour.
Thank you, Albert Mayor, Mayor Flores, Claudia Calderon, and myself attended the San Joaquin Valley Policy Conference on Friday, the May 13th. It was the final day of the conference. There was two sessions that were attended. The first session was on state and federal funding for projects, and so it was an interesting, very factual-driven conversation from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and other agencies about funding that's available. The second session was on housing development. There's several different members that were a part of that, but they really focused on self-help enterprises, so it was great to see some projects that were completed in Porterville to be showed up on the screen, and self-help to be shown as an expert in the space, and they work right here in Tulare County and in the city of Porterville. And then that concludes the conference, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know that we attended on Friday. I went around speaking to the people that were there present, and I heard that the day before Porterville was acknowledged, once again, for the efforts that they are doing in the transportation and other things, so thank you for all of that. The Porterville Police Department Promotions Ceremony, congratulations, go to the three officers for their administrative promotions, to lieutenant and sergeants, I see a smiling face in the back, and to the other two officers who were not able to be present, I look forward to their promotions. My gratitude goes to the families who were present to support their son, and of course the spouses that were there, and to the officers who attended and were present to support those who were being promoted. That was nice to see the room filled, and I will conclude how important it is to support the men and women in public safety. Once again, congratulations. Councilmember Tate, you were there?
Yes, I was. It was, it's always a great opportunity to be able to attend and watch and observe and be a part of the whole process of being able to promote our officers. They work really hard, and they keep us safe. I sleep at night well, knowing that you're all looking after us. Anyway, so it was nice to attend, got to meet some of your families, got to talk to your mom and dad for a long time. I guess they were waiting for a picture, and then I heard your mom say, "Well, I think Mark left," so, anyway. It was fun to meet the families and to see everybody come together, and I don't really have anything else to say, but it was great, thank you.
Thank you. The next one is the TCAG Tulare County Transportation Authority. We met yesterday. It was an in-person and a virtual meeting. The first item on the agenda was to review the conditions of State Assembly Bill 361 to continue allowing remote attendance at the TCAG board meetings. There was a discussion. Legal counsel brought three recommendations. Number one was not brought forth as a discussion. Number two was to decide to not renew the AB 361 findings and suspend all remote access beginning June 1st, 2022, and number three, to decide to not renew the AB 361 findings but continue to allow remote access for public TCAG staff and consultants, and staff from Caltrans and the offices of the state and federal elected representatives to participate and attend in board meetings and/or present agenda items as necessary. The motion in the second was made for number two, to not renew the AB 361 findings and suspend all remote access. This did not pass. There were six yes and seven no's. The motion in second was made for number three, to renew the AB 361 findings but continue to allow remote access. This one passed, seven yes, six no's. On the transportation consent calendar, there were six items of action. The adoption of the following resolutions: to approve change in the membership of the Tulare County Congestions Management Process Steering Committee, the Regional Surface Transportation Program State Exchange Authorization for the fiscal year 2021-2022, the Regional Surface Transportation Program Exchange and Federal Program Distribution for the fiscal year 2021-2022, to approve the AMPO component, project selection guidelines for Cycle Six of the Act of Transportation Program, approved Transportation Development Act claims for the cities of Isadia and Porterville for the fiscal year 2021-2022, the appointment of two Social Service Transportation Advisory Council SST members. All of these items were unanimously approved. There was one item of information, and that was with regard to the Senate Bill One Competitive Program update. Under Transportation Action Discussion Items, no action items, all items that were presented were informational, and updates were given. Caltrans update, there's nothing to report for this area. Under the Association Consent Calendar, the items of action, there were six: the approval of the April 18, 2022 TCAG Board Meeting Minutes, and the minutes of April 12, 2022 Technical Advisory Committee Meeting. Adoption of the following resolutions: the approval amendment of Amendment Number Nine to the fiscal year 2021-2022 Overall Work Program to reaffirm resolution, approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 Overall Work Plan, authorize the TCAG Executive Director to execute Amendment Number One to Agreement Number 202113 with RSG for professional services and travel model development, and to approve agreement with Univision, and authorize Director to sign Amendment for the California Department of Health Healthy Kids Plates Grant Outreach Program. All of those items were unanimously approved. Under the Association Action Discussion Items, there were two action items: to authorize multi-jurisdictional housing element, and the adoption of the resolution with regard to the election of the TCAG Chair, Vice Chair, and selection or reappointment of committee representatives. These duties would take place July 1st, 2022. The outcome for Chair Supervisor Amy Shucklian. As Vice Chair, I remain. And then we were asked if we wished to continue for the following. San Joaquin Valley Regional Planning Agency's Policy Council Supervisor Dennis Townsend and Alternate Linda Larnert remain. Tulare County Water Commission, I remain as the TCAG representative. The San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority Supervisor Amy Shucklian, Alternate Supervisor Eddie Valero. That concludes this report. The next meeting is Monday, June 27th. The Tulare County Regional Transit Agency Councilmember, sorry.
He attended last night, but he's not here this evening. There's a special meeting that's tomorrow night that he'll also be participating, so he'll report on both at the next meeting.
Thank you, so we'll carry that one over, good. Okay. The Carolita Apartments Groundbreaking was held this morning, and it was an honor to have been invited to speak at the groundbreaking this morning for the Carolita Apartments. This project is affordable housing for our community, and the partnerships in both the private and public sectors continue to grow to expand the inventory of affordable housing in Porterville. It was a tremendous partnership, it's a 68 units that will be developed, and again, it was, I look forward to joining the ribbon-cutting, once it's, once that gets to fruition. It was wonderful to be amongst the property owners, the representatives from Senator Hurtado and Assemblyman Mathis were there, Mr. Coyne and Ms. Alexander. A thank you to California State Treasurer Fiona Ma for making her journey to Porterville to speak to housing and support the project of this effort. And I got to meet and speak to the Chief Operation Officer and Director of Development for Chelsea Glenn, and the President and CEO of Position Engineering. He came over and made it, had a good conversation, and he commended the city of Porterville's staff in Jason Reidenhour's and Javier's department, and that was, that was sort of where the carryover was from the Policy Council, that Porterville is being recognized, not just for transportation, but other projects. And it was wonderful to meet the property owners. Vice Mayor, you were there, and so was Councilmember Tate. Vice Mayor?
You pretty much covered everything I could think of, except just that I was also very proud to be there, and, you know, it's really interesting when you go visit a groundbreaking where it's just dirt, and then to go back later and see a grand opening and things like that, so I'm looking forward to that as well, and the 68, seeing the 68 units.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate?
What she said and what she said, because I was kind of, I just wouldn't want along to be able to see what was going on, I didn't realize it was going to be such a large event. I've been to a few of these groundbreakings and ribbon-cuttings, and it was, it was really special today, especially knowing that the type of housing that's going to be available to residents from our communities is supportive living-type situation, where they'll have services provided to them and additional training, and it's like right, I could throw a rock to the Westfield School where I attended when I was fifth and sixth grade, so it's my old neighborhood there, so, but we got to do the presentation and meet a lot of people, and it was very nice. Thank you for including me.
Thank you. We will now go into oral communications. If there's anyone that would like to come forth under oral communications.
I want to make a comment on animal shelter. May 11th through May 14th, I spent 21 hours at the Porterville Fair, talking to people of Porterville. I asked them if they want the animal shelter dog park where the city is going to build it. Every person I talked to said, "No, no way." We have all, we already gave you all of their names and addresses. The people of Porterville are getting angry at the city for not listening to them in what they want, and they are ready to stand up and say, "No, and no more." I suggest that each city council member must get out and walk door-to-door and ask the voters, "Are you happy with us? What would you like changed? How can we help your families?" Walk down Main Street and talk to the voters, you will hear and see lots of unhappy people. I keep asking the city council to have a town hall meeting for the voters and the people of Porterville to ask questions and tell you what they need, and we haven't had a town hall meeting yet. Tulare County Supervisor Dennis Townsend, Sheriff Mike Boudreau, and the Tulare County Fire Department will be having a town hall Thursday, May 19th, at 6:00 PM, here in Porterville at the Porterville Veterans Memorial Building, located at 1900 West Olive Avenue. You will be able to ask questions at that time, and your questions will be answered. In the past year, for your dius, me and others that are here tonight in attendance have been called Johnny-come lately, a liar, a crybaby, that were uninformed, and accused me of smearing someone's name. I am not a liar, only the truth comes out of my mouth, ever. The only person I will ever answer to is God. I love my hometown of Porterville, I was born here in 1946, have lived here almost all of my life, and will always fight for what is right. This is my hometown, too, and it belongs to the people of Porterville, not the city council, not the people that work for the city. I promise that I will continue to fight until I take my last breath, I don't know when that'll be, I'm 76, who knows? I only fight for what's true, and what's right, and what's righteous. Like my shirt says, "Freedom is the new normal," and freedom is my normal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else that would like to come forth under oral communications?
Greg Meister, 116 Eugene. Just wanted to continue with the homeless. When I was walking the river, I just didn't have enough time to finish, but I noticed that they are cutting into the cottonwoods, they put face cuts and started a back cut, and what they're doing is they're prematurely killing the trees so that they have firewood in the future. They're also digging holes and knocking the bottoms out of buckets, and then they're sticking them in the ground, and that's where they're using the restroom, and they're using the south bank of the river to do this. It's, I mean, it was so eye-opening to go down in the river and see this. I didn't want to just come up here and complain, I wanted to try to think of like solutions that we could come up to make this better, and it's an idea, and I had this idea because I seen that we were able to mix jurisdictions with Porterville Unified School District and the city, and we started the Yes Program, right, and we're funding the staff, and we're able to have an after-school program for the constituents that aren't able to pick up their children until they get off work. Well, so, we happen to be blessed, we have Porterville Developmental Center right here in our backyard, and they actually- here in our backyard, and, and they actually revamped some buildings with COVID-19 money. And so if there was a way to get Mr. Lawless and whoever it is at PDC to come up with some kind of housing for our homeless to possibly relocate would be a great thing, right? Of course, we'd have to figure out funding and whatnot, but, but is it doable? Another thing, I noticed talking, I talked to eight different homeless people, and four of them were not from Porterville. They did not have family in Porterville. They, they, I, I didn't get into how they got here, but the simple fact is, is they're not native to Porterville. And so we, we have had incentives to give shots in this community. What if we came up with an incentive to get, to help them get back home to where their families at? Possibly given maybe a one-way ticket with some financial aid to get to where their family, where their friends are, and maybe give them the best opportunity to do well where they're at, or where they go? With, if we're able to work with Porterville Developmental Center, this could something, could be something that goes countywide, right? This could be a solution that, that possibly other cities will get involved in. And not only that, but Porterville Developmental Center also has the ability to analyze people for psychological problems, right? And, and, and be able to figure out different ways on helping the community. That's what I'm looking, thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else that would like to come forth? Do we have anyone on virtual?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. We will now go into other matters. Councilmember Tate, is there anything?
Regarding the, the homeless and Porterville Developmental Center, I actually had a discussion with one of our senators in 2019, and that, it was a proposal, and it looked like we might be perhaps able to work out a plan. A lot of the people that I think that are homeless at one time were perhaps in state facilities or supportive living or some type of thing that, you know, to that. And, and a lot of them, you see them, and you can see that they need medication, they need all, they have need after need. There's, we could consolidate people that are interested for now to volunteer with the project that we report on each week, which would be great. The more volunteers involved, the more we can do. And the situation as far as PDC, that was kind of in the works, not just this facility, but we have state facilities all over, all over, that are not being used anymore. They've basically closed. The lights are still on, and, or they may just be partially populated. And I know how much money was put into this facility from when I worked there. But anyway, then COVID hit, we did use that as a warning center, and because there wasn't enough beds at Sierra View, so it was utilized for that purpose, and our, the staff at PDC were taking care of those individuals. So it's something to, to pursue. But there's all kinds of ideas, and there, the cities are involved in this and doing the best that we can do. But we'd appreciate you coming together and working with us. And also, I guess that's really it. That's anything I can think of that would, might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Just a few items. One, again, I, I want to acknowledge Maria Bemis and the Fiscal Department regarding the audit and the city finances. So I was really pleased to hear that report again, but also so that the public can have access to that and, and really get to see things like that and be transparent. Another thing, I'm really looking forward to the library opening. I, I think, you know, a lot of people have different views, but I, I really feel like the community needs this and have access to the library. Just hearing the number of people that take advantage of the storytime and the grab and go and the things like that, I, I think it, it's a good, you know, introduction into our summer, having our temporary library. While our permanent is in process. Another thing I wanted to mention was, as the mayor talked about earlier, the Carolita homes that are being built, we had the opportunity, you know, at events like that, we get introduced to different people and dignitaries and, and agencies. And today, as we met the California State Treasurer, that opportunity opened up to talk about more potential projects, funding, and things like that, by that person just attending that event in our city. And then I love that the staff takes the advantage and our mayor take advantage of that little bit of time to talk to these dignitaries and, and just, you know, potentially open up that discussion for opportunities. So I was glad to be there today and, and be a part of that. One other thing I wanted to mention that I participated in this past Saturday was, it's with the Californian Native Vote Project, and they held their second annual, annual Power Building Summit. And it was virtual. Unfortunately, we, you know, they really wanted to have it in person, probably in Sacramento, but it was held virtually. And what it is, is just an effort to get more young Native American people involved in the process. And, and I feel that way, not just for Native Americans, but everybody, in getting people involved in the process of being a candidate, whether it be school board, or local, or, you know, county, but also being aware of different legislation. And I think, you know, I appreciate the community that comes and asks questions, just to get familiar with the things that are going on in our area that affect our families and our community. So I was really proud to be a part of that and just hear the discussion on, you know, one of the topics which I was able to contribute to was, why is local politics important? And not everybody thinks that it's important until that issue affects you, but all these issues affect us, whether it be water, the streets, what kinds of services are, are in our city. And I think attending the meetings and asking questions is a way to learn those things. So I liked the example, and I actually received help and support from the staff, where we were able to talk about during the pandemic, we had to shift our focus from the main projects that were in progress and in place and the way we met. You know, I talked about, I did not like the virtual meetings. That's how I was, when I took office, the meetings were all virtual, and it was very hard to work with the staff and, and each other because everything was virtual. But we had to adjust to it. And then when we were able to come back with masks and things like that. So I was able to talk about those levels of things that, you know, we had to all experience, but it was related to everything that we transitioned out of and back into providing services and trying to get business conducted. So it was, it was a good experience, and, and I was glad to be a part of that. And then the last thing I'll just say is, on a more personal note, I had the loss of an aunt today, my grandmother's sister, and I, I see the family quite often, so I just wanted to send out prayers and blessings to their family for healing as my aunt is on her journey. And I'll end there.
Thank you very much. I want to say that tomorrow, Mr. Lawless, Vice Mayor, and I will be making a journey to Fresno, and we will be a part of the California Transportation Commission. We're going with Supervisor Vanderpoel, who is the TCAG Chair. I am the Vice Chair. We have a representative from the policy council. We have TCAG representatives. We have LAFCO representatives, and it's to support the efforts that TCAG is working with the 99 Effort and other matters. But we will be speaking with the Transportation Commission tomorrow to that regard. One of my most warm felt events in the city of Porterville has always been the Military Banner and the ceremony, and to commemorate all the servicemen in that regard. And I believe we will be catching up on the three years at this event on May 27. And I encourage your attendance because it's during COVID, we were not able to, and the virtual is not the same as in person to that regard. I heard, I hear Vice Mayor and her personalization. I just want to share something, and it has nothing to do with business, other than, I always think about May, between May and June, the first week of June. My husband 20 years ago began his eternal life journey, but was going through hospice. My husband passed away of pancreatic cancer. So he was able to come to terms with all of his family. And that was such a beautiful picture, to be a part of that process, to respect everything he asked for to the very end. And when I looked at the date today, it was just a reminder that there are many celebrations that go on in life, and there is humility, and to tell the person, to tell them that you love them, because you never know what tomorrow's going to bring. And it was just, I, I was touched because I did know your aunt, and I knew her for a long time. And this is something that I have never shared to this regard, about me. And so with that being said, I listened, I hear, and there was very good closure. But you just never know. And I'm going to conclude with fortitude and resiliency to that regard. Mr. Lawless?
Well, as you said, I appreciate the council's fortitude. It's been a long evening, starting with our early close session. Really appreciate that. I want to express just some appreciations and recognitions. I want to thank Patrice and the administration staff for their, for their planning of the employee luncheon back on May the 4th. May the 4th be with you, and fantastic job, and just great spirit that, that, that department exhibits. So I really appreciate all the efforts that they did, as well as Public Works for helping with the setup of that as well. So, great event. At the fair and the city employees that were out at the fair in Manning the Booth, appreciate all the work that was done, and that's a great annual event also. Appreciation to the chiefs that did a public safety day for leadership Porterville. So not only to see what leadership looks like in public safety, but to give them real-life demonstrations, even to do an active shooter simulation, really eye-opening, being faced with the prospect of shoot or don't shoot. And Marcel Morales even ended up with blood, blood on his arm from getting shot by one of the class members. So the chief was very careful to say that no class members could be shot, so I appreciate Marcel taking some for the team. So appreciate all that he did on that, in organizing that. Councilmember Stowe indicated they won their softball game this evening, so he'll find out tomorrow what, so sorry that he's not here this evening. Fernando had his first year anniversary.
Oh, that's right. I remember when you called in virtually. I've never forgotten that, to let us know where you were.
And then also wanted, Julia celebrated her birthday also.
Happy birthday. Yay.
We do have, Mike Knight would like to remind everyone that Community Cleanup Day is on Saturday, so the Corporation Yard will be very much alive with refuse and other items coming in. We, it's going to be a busy, busy time. K-Jug and Military Banner turning back to back on that coming up. And then someone special to our office here is, and I may have mentioned this before, but Dalton Rogers, who entered our office and then went on to UC Merced, and ultimately is going to become ordained, an ordained priest at the end of this month. So for those of you that knew Dalton, just a remarkable young man. And with that, that's the end of the comments, the plethora of comments that I have.
That's it? Okay. Well, it is 9:24. Meeting adjourned.